Good morning. It's 8:30. We'll call the meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Just a reminder that it's a five minute time limit per person, and anyone wishing to speak to this item must sign in prior to the meeting. We do have one individual signed in. Jeanette Gibbons.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I apologize for the late invitation here to rattle off in five minutes, and I may go a little bit long. I hope you'll indulge me if I do run a little bit beyond that. But my concerns coming before you this morning, and I must admit, this is my first time ever in my life attending a county commissioner meeting, and I apologize to fellow citizens in my community, as well as our country at large, for not being a more involved citizen prior to this point. And I come before you with just many concerns, but I'll try to focus on the one that has most recently come to my attention, which is the purchase of the e-poll books. Now, my background here is that I have lived almost 40 years of my life in Brookings. And 20-plus years I taught on campus at SDSU. I also earned my degrees at SDSU. All of my children, extended family, SDSU. And my background is in computer science, my professional background in computer science, as well as health areas. That was another degree. But I do have grave concerns about the election. And no, I'm not over the 2020 election yet, because that has not been resolved. And I don't know how many of you are aware of the last night premiering of the movie 2000 Mules, produced by Dinesh D'Souza. He has done his research. He has quite a history himself. But he has put together a documentary that proves some of the very blatant fraud that occurred in 2020, which is the use of the ballot boxes, people dropping off their ballots, because we were all locked down with COVID and couldn't possibly stand within six feet of somebody else. And they had people that were hired to drop off completed ballots. Now, they have, I don't know how many hours of film of people that were going to these ballot boxes, and I mean, there are films of people walking up to the ballot boxes, dropping in 6, 8, 10, I don't know how many ballots. And they would go to multiple ballot boxes, the same person, and drop off these multiple batches of ballots. And not only did they drop them off in Pennsylvania, this same person was hired to go down to Georgia and do this same job. See, they have this document on film. It's irrefutable evidence of this one portion of election fraud. Now, I followed the election fraud from November 4. I stayed up and watched until, oh, my gosh, we all had to stop counting, because whatever, we had to stop counting, because we had to boil up and cook up some more ballots from someplace, because the wrong person was winning this election. Now, I don't care about your sentiments about Donald Trump, Biden, or anyone else politically. I care about fair elections, because if we don't have fair elections, our country is lost. And I fear that it was lost many years ago, that we have been living some type of delusion of thinking we were voting for the people that are representing us. And I honestly do not believe that anymore. My bubble was burst quite a while ago. Well, a year and a half ago, I'll say. So, election fraud. There is election fraud that ties to electronics. I understand how that can happen as a computer science person, and I'm not using my expertise as a computer science person to speak to you on that subject. I like to use computers to get my job done, and I don't like all the hardware, and I don't like all the nuts and bolts of what's going on inside of it, although I can write a pretty decent program if I have to. So, I know the types of fraud that can occur, and I believe there were many types of fraud that did occur in 2020, and especially after I listened to the presentations that were given by people who worked as poll watchers, poll workers, and we all have heard some about the contested states, Arizona, Georgia, Michigan, Wisconsin, Pennsylvania, Nevada. Well, I watched the hearings that went on in those states. I was fortunate enough to be at home with the time to do that. So, those were broadcast on RSBNetwork.com. So, on my computer, I sat and watched those hearings that occurred in those contested states with the poll workers, the poll watchers, that saw the things that happened and reported the things that they saw that happened. The 30-year Army veteran, who is a cybersecurity specialist, who explained the nuts and bolts of our votes going overseas and getting kind of retabulated and sent back. I mean, I watched all of that. I heard people like myself speaking from their heart about what had happened and what was wrong. And yet, all of that was just kind of brushed away. Nobody heard that on the news, did we? No, we didn't hear it on the news. Well, if we haven't figured out by now, the news is not the news. It's what they want us to hear and see. So, I will go now to talking about the purchase that has now been made by our county for these e-poll pads from a company called No Inc. Now, I don't know. I just did a brief survey of a little bit of research. I like to research on the computer. So, I don't know how much information you have about this company, but I just did a quick search of it, launched in 2011. Then, I did some other searches and really couldn't find that they did much of anything until about 2018. And then, in 2021, they purchased the B Pro, which was our e-poll that we had before. And then, I found an article in November of 2020 where, oops, the e-poll books didn't work very well, down in places like Georgia. Oh, in this short article, and I'll find just a short excerpt here. Georgia and many states across the United States are now utilizing voter check-in electronic poll books supplied by No Inc., as well as No Inc. scanners to count. Failing e-poll book systems can hamper vote auditing programs that attempt to reconcile the number of votes cast with the number of votes entered. So, there's a discussion right here about the problems that they had with this very company in 2020. Were you aware of that before we purchased them?
Ms. Gibbons, could you please arrive at your final point?
My point is that I think we need to investigate what we're doing in our county with our voting systems. I think the e-poll books are moving in the wrong direction. I have requested now through a FOIA, a formal FOIA request, to have our systems evaluated. Now, I don't know who doesn't want our systems evaluated. Do we not all want the same thing in terms of fair voting? And if we don't, then I think we are on the wrong, I'm on the wrong page.
We've received your request and are working on a formal response.
All right. And I just, we are on the same team. We need a fair election system. We need a community that comes together and works together. We love each other, and we need to build a better world for our children, grandchildren, and everyone else. And it's going to get there, but we have to do it together.
Thank you.
I will probably send you some more information.
Thank you.
And I apologize for the late letter last night. I sent it Friday and then noticed that it did not send, so I re- I will stay in touch with you now that I know who you are and have your addresses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any items to add or changes or amendments?
To exact session at the end, we have to add 125 to 6 for security.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five is the consent agenda items. We have the approval of the minutes, approval of a travel request, approval of personnel action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, approval of the human services report, and the volunteer RSOs noted in the minutes for work comp purposes. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Any discussion on those items? Hearing none. Call the roll, please, Jenna.
Pierce.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item six, routine business. 6A is the approval of the claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Boersma.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B is recognition of employee anniversaries. So, I've got those. I'll pop down here. So, our first certificate of appreciation is presented to Jean Stobner this third day of May 2022 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 25 years of exceptional service to the Brookings County Department of Equalization. The second one is presented to Michelle Delaney on this third day of May 2022 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 10 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Commission Department. Our next one is a certificate of appreciation presented to Jeremy Creasy on this third day of May 2022 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 10 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. And our final is a certificate of appreciation presented to Misty Moser on this third day of May 2022 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition of 10 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Weed and Pest Department. All right. We'll move on to item C, department head reports. We'll start with Dustin for BCOAC.
Morning, everybody. I will start through the facility since our last meeting. In the gun range, we had 103. Archery range, we had 68. We have hosted 23 events since our last meeting. We had the Arbor Day run last Friday, so we had about 100 runners out through the facility. They did their loop through the Dakota Nature Park, and then the city brought out trees, and everybody got a free tree again, so that was nice. A new event we had was actually the Sioux Valley Kennel Club. They had some scent trials. So, we had over 40 dogs in the facility. People from Ohio, Montana, Washington, Colorado came out, and they did scent trials. It was pretty interesting. Hopefully, we can gain their business again next year and make it kind of an annual event. I know the board and you guys are always talking about bringing different events into the facility, other than just shooting, I guess. So, we're trying to do that. Joad, kind of want to give some kudos to them. They stepped up. They did a very good season. The last night of their actual session, they had a pizza party, so we set up some 3D targets for the kids, played archery tag. All the coaches played the kids. It was really fun. Fed them pizza. It was very good. Little maintenance around the facility. Commissioner Jensen and myself got together, kind of looking at that parking lot. We're going to hold off on sealing it, so we'll save some money in the 2022 budget for this year, but wanted to thank Brian and his crew out at the Highway Department. They came out and got it crack sealed. They were close by, so they stopped in and did that. Gave a tour. Visit Brookings contacted me. There was a group of traveler counselors in town. These folks, some are paid, some are volunteers. They sit in the hubs that give information out about South Dakota. So, they were in touring Brookings, and then they were headed to Watertown, so they stopped in the facility, gave them a tour, hopefully get some pamphlets and stuff in their facilities, just to drive more business into our facility. But everybody, they praise the facility when they come in. Everybody really enjoys it. Projects for the summer, the vestibule, they actually called me last week, so that is in 100% complete. I just wanted to thank you as a commission on behalf of myself and the volunteers. I mean, it was a huge improvement for the facility. You can actually have somewhat of a conversation in our viewing room now while people are shooting. We get it's a gun range. It's noisy. You're shooting guns inside, but it's a huge improvement. Other than that, we're kind of wrapping up with shooting sports, all of our Joad sessions, kind of the busy time, January through April. So, Lisa and myself, we're kind of working on different things we can do in the summer. We're actually working with the city now. They have this thing called Community Games this summer, so we're trying to get them to come out and partake in the facility, whether it's shooting archery, or we can find a fun target or something to do in the gun range, but just trying to keep people coming through. Then, I kind of just, if you guys want me to do anything else or other improvements to the facility, just let me know. But that's all I had. Unless you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions? Thanks, Dustin. County Development, Richard.
Morning.
Morning.
We have our monthly planning and zoning meeting this evening. We've got Bob's report that was given to you, a couple extra items he wanted me to add on that weren't included in there. Submitted the quarterly report for the OEM and budget for the state OEM requirements. Submitted our budget sheets for next year, and Commissioner Boersma alluded to this last month, requesting to have the PPCC and POD budget line under the Emergency Management Department. And we'd like to have this on the May 24 agenda for discussion and a possible action item. So, and also responded to the fertilizer rollover on Friday, and things went well there, and cleanup is in process. So, and that's all that I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Pierce.
I see on your agenda for tonight, there's just to the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah.
Does that, do those proposed changes address any of the issues that we've talked about on housing in the county?
No, basically, this is a housekeeping measure. It's updating the plating requirements, taking it off from the treasurer and adding, changing it to the finance officer. When that change took place, our subdivision ordinance wasn't updated at that time, so it currently says auditor and treasurer in there. And we updated, changed the names on those to finance officer on there. So, just, that's basically what it is doing, is updating the document. Everything else in the document stays the same.
And you want to publicly tell us what time the meetings are tonight?
The meeting this evening is at 8:00 PM up here in the council chambers.
And in the future, we've got a meeting coming up where we're going to discuss the joint jurisdictional ordinance.
Yes, that'll be coming up Monday, June 13.
June 13.
Time to be determined yet.
All right.
With the City Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Would you say that one more time, because I don't have that on my calendar?
For the Planning Commission, it'll be June, the joint public hearing for the City Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission will be Monday, June 13.
At what time do you don't?
Where, to be determined.
Okay.
It's always fun to try and get those two commissions together at the same time. It's a lot of people, a lot of coordination.
Any other questions or comments from the commissioners? Thanks, Richard. Highway Department?
I'll have a little more thorough report at the next meeting, but one thing I wanted to touch on is that as we're to place gravel on, I know that it gets to be some sort of a mess out there that, I know it upsets people, but in the end, it will be better. But it seems like we always manage to catch rain, and it does make a mess, so I ask that the public work with us on as we're trying to improve their gravel roads. I've heard quite a bit about it, but just wanted to let you guys know that we are preparing those roads for gravel, and I know right now with the rain that we got, which is very, very nice that we got that rain, because we were getting pretty dry. But it does make our roads a little bit of a mess, but in the end, they will be better. So, aside from that, we've been on those roads that we are preparing to place gravel on. We're cleaning out some ditches, installing a couple of culverts, and here towards the end of the week, with any luck, we'll have some patching being done on our chip seal routes that are planned, and going to be putting in some culverts here. So, aside from that, I'll have a more thorough report for the bridge down south. I know they are coming along, but the weather did kind of slow them guys down a little bit, too, with the moisture.
Any questions? Commissioner Pierce?
I had a conversation with Stacy, and I don't know how much of that US Department of Transportation webinar you were able to listen to. But I think a conversation that we need to have, money is coming down from the federal government right now on infrastructure, and there was a webinar on the grant program, which would, I think, provide opportunities for rural areas. It's different than what we've been looking at. And I don't know, Brian, if you have a thought on who should be watching for information coming out on those programs for Brookings, that Brookings County might be interested in applying for grants? Who should be watching that? Who should be attending the webinars, bringing information back to the commission? I just feel like we might be just a little bit haphazard in how we're dealing with that right now. And I wondered if that was something you thought your department should be doing, or, and I know I'm just throwing that out at you. I didn't get a chance to call you.
I am on the South Dakota Department of Transportation Advisory Council, and I know there's a lot of money coming down in a lot of different forms, but I am involved. A lot of what's discussed in that advisory council, there's a lot of unknowns yet. So, I do hate to bring anything public until we do know what's going on.
Right.
And how the DOT is going to matriculate that money down to the counties. That hasn't been determined yet. And the advisory council is going to be preparing a suggestion to the commission, the Transportation Commission, for approval on a mechanism to get that money to the counties. And then, what form of a match from the local governments is going to be required. So, I do have my hand on it, but as far as announcing anything, I can't do that until we get word from the commission on what's being approved.
So, Brian, what you're talking about there, those are the funds that go through state DOT, right?
Correct.
So, what I'm talking-
Any federal funds that we would get as a county needs to be ran through the state.
Well, that's not actually, there are federal grant programs that don't go through the state. Those are the ones I'm worried about us missing. That's how we're funding the interchange.
Four municipalities over a certain population, and we would not qualify.
Stacy, I just forgot the name of the program, the webinar.
I didn't get to watch that. I know they recorded it, though, and it's on the DOT website, so my intent was to go back and watch the recording of it.
And that's the federal DOT website?
Yes.
Okay. Because that was a federal grant program that doesn't go through state DOT. Those are the ones I'm worried about us missing. I think you're right. I mean, I understand. I'm confident you got a handle on the ones that go through state DOT. It's the ones like where we're building the interchange, where we got that $18 million that I don't think we've got our eye on.
But those are also being administered through the state DOT.
I think the program, I did listen to the two hours of the, yesterday, while my wife was doing rehab. I sat in the car and watched the whole presentation. But the government website is wwwtransformation.gov backslash SS4A. SS4A is the Safe Streets Program, which is a little bit different than the federal money that's coming down for infrastructure through the DOT. That's one program. This is the Safe Streets one, and it's $1 billion a year for four years. And the first part of the program is to develop a Safe Streets program or plan, and you can apply for a grant for that, just to develop that. In other words, you have to go out and hire some consultant help, some engineers. You have to develop a much wider plan. We can't take, for instance, we can't take 20th Street and say, this is our Safe Streets approach to this one road. It has to be a comprehensive one. It could include the entire First District and all the counties to put together a Safe Streets program. And then, you can start to get down to specific applications after you've got that plan together, and then you can relate that project to your plan. So, the first because I agree, they don't have all the rules yet. They alluded to that in the question and answer, period. It's an 80/20 match, up to an 80% match, 20% local match on any of that's, that has to be a minimum of 20% local match. And there's a lot of different components that can go into that local match part of it. But the big thing about it right now for us to look at is to stay on top of the fact that if we want to put together a comprehensive that if we want to put together a comprehensive Safe Streets program, we have to decide to do that. But then at the same time, that's going to take money and we have to put together in an application for that what we think it's going to cost to get that grant. And then again, we pay 20% of that, they pay 80% of that grant. So that's a conversation we can have with, with the highway department. But we also have to have that with other counties around us and other communities around us. Because you can partner with communities, you can partner with Safe Streets, with the school districts. School districts have straight, Safe Street programs. You can bring them into your plan. And so there's, there's a lot of groundwork before the money flows for actual projects. And that's going to take a year or better to put that together. So we have to, we have to kind of look at it and decide whether we're going to apply for the grant first to get the planning put together. That's by interpretation what I listened to for two hours yesterday.
Commissioner Bartley, did that go through state DOT or does that come, that's a separate grant for the federal government?
Yep, that's a federal, it's a federal program. As a matter of fact, if you want to include state roads, state highways in your safety plan, you have to have an agreement with the state DOT that they agree to work with you on any major changes you want to make to their highway system because they control that. The money can't go to just a highway program. It has to go to Safe Streets attaches to a highway program. Because a lot of communities have highways that go right through their towns. And when that's, state highways go right through the middle of their main street through their town. So they want to make sure that they include the state in that process on a Safe Streets plan. So you, I, it's down to plastic barricades and cones and everything else that you have to put in your plan to make a safe street. There's equity provisions, there's costs and now, there's, there's a lot that goes into it. This, this is a write a five page deal and submit it for that grant. It's actual submission of the grant itself is going to be labor intensive. It's a four-year program. It's almost to the point where if we wanted to get involved as a community, as a county and other counties, we'll have to hire a full-time person. And you could pay for that person through the program, through the grant for putting together the plan. So it's, I think there's more information to come. This was just the first outlay. They did tribal, they did counties, and now they'll do municipalities, major large population groups. So there's more to come, but that's the website if you want to go look at it.
I was unable to watch the webinar yesterday because I had another commitment. But when I read what came down from federal DOT and thought about what we've been working for, what, five years with Volga? That this might be a wonderful opportunity for funding some of that infrastructure that, that both Volga and Brookings want. But that, and that's one thing. But my other question was, how are we tracking these kinds of programs? I just, I just happened to see something come across the internet on it. How are we keeping track of this kind of, of grant opportunity where we might be able to do some funding for some of our infrastructure? I don't know that we've got something in place. I don't know if that's Brian's department's responsibility. And that's what I was, I think the Safe Street program might be a new program then, Brian, that, that maybe you're not up to speed on yet.
There's a lot of new programs.
Yeah, so that's my question. How are we going to keep track of that and who's responsible for doing that? That's all.
It almost sounds, Commissioner Bartley, like this might be a multi-city, multi-county effort that first district may or may not end up being involved in.
We would have to ask first district to get involved. I don't know that they're going to voluntarily jump on the program to administer it because it will take a lot of effort to put this together in a multi-county process. I'm sure there's some safety plans. We have our own 20-year plan out there for safe roads in our county. This is, this is basically Safe Streets. I mean, it includes the city.
Right.
Includes every community in our county.
Even if we look at a Brookings County version and include the city of Brookings and our outlying municipalities, I think there's certainly some potential there because we've had similar conversations in Aurora and we've had similar conversations in White and in Elkton. And so I think that might be something worth looking at. But to your point, the level of time and intensive nature of that planning effort may require an entire FTE or a full consultant. And so I think that's something we have to talk about as, whether that's a priority for part of our funding or other things as well.
They're not ready for the applications coming yet, so we've got plenty of time to, not plenty of time, but we have time to, to determine whether we're going to have communication with these other towns. You know, a big part of this is with the Safe Streets and the equity of getting where you need to go. Irregardless involves a lot of the school districts in many cases because it involves kids, Safe Streets, getting to school. It involves, you know, your roadways, your bike paths, so everything is, it's a little bit more in-depth than just, we're going to build a road somewhere because we want it.
I'm sure, Brian, with the Highway Superintendent Association, I'm sure LTAP keeps you well informed on all the programs available. They're watching it. They're watching it. It's just ever so changing. Every, every time you guys have a meeting, they're giving you updates, I'm sure.
And some of it's our responsibility to watch seminars like this, to be informed as to what's going on. And then focusing when we get more information. There were a lot of questions, there was a whole hour of questions at the second part of it. Screen never changed, but a lot of questions. And there were some good answers, there was, you know, wait and see.
We do need to pause whether we're done with comments and we need to come back to this. We sure can, but we do have a scheduled nine o'clock that we need to get to. Thanks, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Item 7A is a public hearing in action to approve a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for Shawday Vineyard. It's our motion to approve.
Second.
Any, and to start with, we'll make sure, I think we have the applicant somewhere in the chambers probably. Yeah, Dylan, you want to come on up? Oh, sure. Yep. So to start with, we'll open the public hearing as the, as the applicant, the first proponent testimony perhaps. Can you talk to us a little bit? And how you plan to use it?
Sure. Yeah, I'm Dylan Ringling, owner of Shawday Vineyard and Winery. Looking to re-up my beverage license. Moving forward, just a quick comment, all my staff is now going to be TAM certified and we're actually looking at getting an ID scanner. They're expensive, so we'll see. Hopefully we can get one.
Okay. Any other public testimony proponents for this application? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions or comments from you? Jenna, any questions?
I just wanted to let the public know that per our ordinance, when a business fails a compliance check, we schedule a public hearing to approve their alcohol license. So the renew Shawday Vineyard's on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm license.
And did you, did you say that you're now sending your entire staff through the training program that's required by the state for?
Yes, that's correct.
And what about new staff? As you hire them?
And as we hire them, yep, that too.
Was that something that was new to you or?
The previous owners had that and then I just fell behind on it. We didn't, that, that employee actually that got, had this thing happen to her, she was in the process of getting her licensing and she hadn't completed it yet.
Other questions or comments from the commissioners?
One of the questions with Sheriff Stanwyck, is there any ongoing problems or anything with establishment?
No, and I'm satisfied as, that he has a plan to, so that don't happen again with the training and possibly the scanner. So I have, have no issues with that.
Thank you.
Other comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Judson?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Boersma?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our 9:05 is a public action and approval of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license for SVK Properties, which is Midway Camp. Jenna, do you want to give a little bit of background on this one before we do the motion?
Yeah, again, per our county ordinance, ordinance, when a business fails a compliance check, we schedule a public hearing to approve their license. Midway Camp did fail the compliance check. Mr. Todd Voss was unable to attend in person due to family circumstances. So he did provide the commissioners a statement and does have a plan going forward to not let that happen again. He does have several other businesses in the county and knows that he does take it very seriously, so that's what I've got.
Thank you. To start the discussion, do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
I, I would move to table this matter. Our ordinance requires the licensee to appear in person for the public hearing when there's been a violation of the alcohol ordinance. And Mr. Voss is not here and he does not have a representative here is my understanding. Is that correct?
No, I don't believe he has a representative here.
In that case, is there a second on the motion to table?
Second.
To a date, the next meeting, because we don't, table indefinitely.
We would still have, we would still be fine to, to do that at next meeting.
Mm-hmm. I think we should let the applicant know that it's been moved and seconded to table. We'll take a vote on that motion. All those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? Tabled until the next meeting.
Do we need to note the day of the next meeting? May?
Yep, the date of the next meeting is May 24th. Okay, move back to department head reports for a moment. Anything further on the sheriff's department? Or anything further on the highway department, sorry? Sheriff's department. Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
Deputy Creasy, that 10 years, 25 years, you know, what we've been going through. Anyway, Deputy Creasy is my school resource officer and dare officer. And if you recall, got the cops grant for community policing. And we were able to hire a deputy, which is Anna Sales, is at the academy right now. But that then frees up Deputy Creasy, so he's my community policing deputy also. So his job is to set up coffee with the cops and, and neighborhood watches. Right now, between everything, he's going to every business in the county and updating our after-hours file in case there's any damage when the patrol guys are going around and stuff. So he's kept busy and he's going to be doing bicycle safety here this spring also. If you look on the second page of my activity reports, you can see that he's busy in the schools. You know, and he's been doing presentations in the schools and stuff and following up on truancy, so he's, he's kept busy. Anyway, just in the detention center, we have, present, we have 36 inmates. Three of them are Moody County inmates. I believe I may still have a Yankton one. Booking is busy. I saw last night when I checked the booking sheet, 10 came through from before midnight to after midnight. So out of that 10, I think there was three that, that stayed. So booking, a lot of times needs two deputies or two, excuse me, two correctional officers in there to, to handle that. Sometimes three to escort after the booking to, to their pods and so forth. So they, they, they stay busy in there. And it's correctional officer week also, so we had a, we had a donation for pizza. So we're gonna, correctional officers, at some noon, will have pizza. So we, somebody was nice enough to give for the week, so that, they do a good job. You know, they went through a lot. Of course, my whole staff has went through a lot in the last two, three years with COVID and stuff, so anyway. At the present time, we have 97 on 24/7, so that's gradually coming up. We have 30 on PBT, so that's 60 to come in twice a day. We got remote breath test, I have 13 on SCRAM, I have 22. I have 24 on UAs. They come in twice a week to, to give a UA. Drug court, there's 24, so they're at random to come in for, and Hope Court is 15. DIO Court is seven. I have eight on GPS, so we're kept busy in that 24/7 area. It'll be nice once we get Phase Two done where we'll have a separate area. Gets a little congestion back in the booking area when all these people are coming in, but staff has been handling that well. Just, just for your information, since, and I only really have one, one contract right now and that's with Moody County. And so far, we've billed out $38,220 for, for inmate. So once we, once we offer more contracts, and that brings up a thing, I'm ready to start, start sending contracts. So I know you had some issues with the last contract on some wording. I've not received any information from the state's attorney's office, so I we need to review that again, so I know, because I'm ready to get, get going. We got, we got staff and it's not long and we'll be into the, into the Phase Twos also, so I'm ready to get going, so. So where are we at with the contract? Can I send out the present one or do we need to review it some more or?
Yeah, I wasn't aware that we needed to make those changes. Leanne, if you want to mark it up and send it over to me, that's fine. Because I think you were the one who voiced-
But could you prob, maybe what we talked about the last time? Maybe Marty, you could send Dan and I each a copy of that. Maybe your office could go through it first and, and correct things that need to be corrected. And then I'd like to look at it, if that, just make it faster. But I think you should do the first revision. Thank you.
Okay. The other thing I want to talk about is, is Highway 14 through Volga. On April 9th, we had a 12-year-old that got hit, hit by a car on crossing the street there. And there wasn't a lot of traffic at the particular time. But anyway, that's brought that Volga City Council has requested to do a study. And when you were talking about maybe these are good times to start doing this, to do a traffic and a pedestrian, not just a traffic, but a pedestrian. And, you know, so I've requested the state to do like we did at Aurora, put up some cameras. Because we, how do we get a real good idea of what the pedestrian traffic unless we got some cameras up there? So I hope they will do that. I was wondering if the council, or excuse me, the commission would be willing to also send a letter? I think the more letters we got, the more, you know, working with the states are difficult. We've tried to get studies at Aurora Corner for, for a long time and finally did. So I think all the, the help we can get will be, would be good. So I don't know if the, if the commission would be willing to send a letter also for support of a study. We've, since I've been sheriff, we've had, I know, two studies. And those particular times, the state said there wasn't enough traffic at one time to warrant any other options there, but I think things have changed. We've got, you know, we got the new Casey's, which is a truck stop. We also got the Ace Hardware, and then we also got Dollar General. And in the summertime, what we're seeing is that Volga has an ordinance for golf carts. So if you're a licensed driver, you can drive a golf cart on municipal streets. But they cross that, what happens, you have a 16-year-old on a golf cart and they got six kids hanging on it as they go across. Now we try to get those as much as we can, but it's, it's, pedestrian traffic has increased there. And that, all the way along there, we, we wanted to put a drone up and just kind of show, because Beacon doesn't really give us a good, doesn't have the Ace store, but it's been so windy, we haven't been able to put the drone up. But the streets are so uneven, it's just, it's just difficult there, so. But maybe with Safe Streets and all this, this is just good timing that we're talking about, so.
Where exactly was that accident at?
That was by Dollar General.
Okay, and was it at the intersection? Was somebody crossing at an intersection?
Well, kinda. It's kind of an intersection. It's kind of, they're, they don't match up. Yeah, so, yeah.
I think this is a compelling case for why some of those Safe Streets
Yeah.
programs could be really valuable to the rural outlying communities as a part of Brookings County if we did a combined effort. I don't, I don't know, Marty, that a letter back to state- I don't know, Marty, that a letter back to state DOT is going to do what we anticipate it would. I'm not, I'm not opposed to the idea, but DOT's primary concern is thinking about traffic studies, not pedestrian safety at those types of instances. So I'm not sure that it'll help the way that we hope. The potential for a Safe Streets Grant Program and serious study of the pedestrian kind of multimodal transportation issues might be, might be exactly what would help us.
Okay. The other thing is what we're doing in Volga too is now that I pretty much got staff back, we're able to put a deputy in the Volga area at seven PM to three AM and that really helps over there too, because Volga's my busiest town.
Sure. We do have a scheduled nine fifteen.
And I'm done. And I'll be done, unless you had any other questions?
Okay.
Oh, no.
Great. Thanks, Marty.
That's a good way to get me.
Our scheduled nine fifteen is a discussion on the Helpline Center Network of Care Partner Aid Memorandum of Understanding. Would you start by giving us your name and kind of some of that for the public record, please?
Yeah, yep. So my name is Heather Murfield. I work for the Human Services Department down on the second floor. Stacy's calling in Shawna. She is gonna kind of give you guys a brief description of what, what this Helpline, Helpline Center Network of Care is. It's something that United Way brought to our attention and that we're trying to get partnered up with.
Hi Shawna, this is Stacy at the commission meeting. You are in the commission meeting right now, so.
Hi Stacy, hi commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Heather, right now, is kind of giving some background on this, so you can kind of listen in and jump in where you can.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So right now, with the Bush Foundation Grant, there is funds for the Brookings and Watertown communities to start up this program. It would be free until August thirty-first of 2024. So Watertown right now has gone through all of their steps and they're either launched or they're right there getting ready to launch as far as building forms, everything like that, and working with their other assistance agencies within their county. So, I mean, it takes a while to get everything set up, because the Helpline Center Network of Care is basically a software platform that allows the county assistance agencies to submit referrals electronically to the other assistance. So say someone comes in to me and I can't help them, I would do an electronic referral to Salvation Army or to United Way versus me just saying, here's my pamphlet, like, this is the address that you need to go to. If they can't help you, go here. This would be an electronic referral that they would then get versus me just telling someone to go and then them not showing up. It's basically a way for, to ensure that Brookings County residents are just falling through the cracks when they truly need assistance. A lot of times when people need assistance, they don't have means to transportation to go to all these places, so it's kind of a bummer when they come to me and I'm like, okay, well, you need to go here first. This would be a way where instead I could sit down with them, get an understanding of what they're truly needing. Maybe they need utility help and rent. And I can sit down with them and show them what their options are for the county and then I would do a referral and send it to that specific agency. Within the software, there is an ability to restrict or share the information just within the agencies that are partnering with the Helpline Center, so that, say that we have someone come on, we would have the ability to restrict all of our applications and everything that is sensitive material, but we could give out their general information, so that way that next agency has a start on accurate information on what they're getting. There also is the ability to collect statistical data for Brookings County to know, maybe there's a service that we don't have that we could look into getting for Brookings County, as well as collect statistics on the data that we currently have, like what areas are we helping out most for people that live within the county. But Shawna's on the line and she's just gonna dive into it a little bit more on what it would mean for Brookings County.
Can I ask a quick just clarification question? Heather and Shawna, is essentially a coordinated entry type platform, correct?
Correct.
So it allows inter-agency cooperation to make sure that someone comes for help in one location and their information and needs are managed throughout the system as a kind of single source point of entry?
Yes, yeah, it's definitely very much, you know, a shared intake, so clients or community members in the system aren't having to, if they go to different partner organizations, they don't have to enter their information again. It's very similar to like a health system where if you go to one point to see your primary care doctor and then you see your dermatologist the following day, you don't have to tell them all of your information again, because they're sharing it electronically in the same system.
Are there questions by the commissioners for some of that information before we take action on that?
I have a lot of questions, but I don't think that's what you're asking at this point.
Questions about the general process and the premise for the program, I think, to start with.
I think this is a policy issue. We have statutory duty to provide county poor relief as required by statute. This is an expansion of that and we need to look at whether that's something that we're interested in expanding what we're doing. That's, that's question number one. And then, and then question number two is, is the agreement that, that has, I have some difficulty with the agreement.
Right, and so this is basically just the presentation of the thing. Obviously, we haven't talked about it before and there is probably going to be things that we'll need to change and look over. The system wouldn't change as far as our policy, what services the county is providing to the public. We would still only, we would still have our limits on what we give out for rent or that we're the last point of contact. That would all remain the same. When the Helpline Center, it, we would be able to upload all of our own documents, so we have an approved application, we have an approved whatever, and we collect driver's license, social security card, whatever. We can upload all of that into the system and then, once that's all there, we could help to direct them to somewhere else first and then if those referrals don't pan out, they could then get referred back to us. So as far as our county policy, it wouldn't change that.
You're saying that the amount of time that you spend with each applicant in explaining programs would not change?
No. Because, because even if I know that I can't help them, I can still give them that direct referral. That way, they're at least having something, because I have people that come in and they've tried, they claim they've tried everywhere else, but I have no proof of that. And so with this referral system, I would know if they've tried these places, because then I could see the path that their referrals went.
How many agencies in, in Brookings County are on Helpline, other than, be the county, but who else is on there besides?
So United Way, I know, has helped, is in with it. They're kind of the first one, so they're further in it than the rest of us. Salvation Army, they were still going over the contract, because they did have some issues with that as well. I think there may be a couple more, I think there's three more. Shawna, I don't know if you have that information. I know Tara had it at our last meeting.
Yes, we're, so we have, Salvation Army has been approved, so they do have approval to move forward with us. Brookings Backpack Program, the Brookings Food Pantry said that they are interested and their board has, wants to move forward. Again, like you said already, Brookings, United Way is moving forward with us, so they'll be tracking different services, their Imagination Library and Delta Dental. Brookings County Youth Mentoring has said yes as well, so they're waiting, some of, it's a process for us to onboard everybody, so some of this will be happening later in the summer. And then we have outreach to multiple organizations and they're in the process of having their boards review the contract and working through some of those things with them. Altogether, there should be about twelve, ten to twelve agencies so far that are looking into it or working through that process.
None of that, the shelter and social services, none of them are part of the Helpline, is that correct?
Not yet. So there is like a work group that is currently taking part and there's representatives from most of the agencies in Brookings County that are going to these meetings and that's exactly what it is. It's basically like a question and answer type thing. Everyone's trying to kind of get the layout of it, to bring back and present to their boards, to see if that's something that they would want to take part in.
Other questions?
Confidentiality, you have to worry about that.
Right, yes. So confidentiality, so anything that is confidential to me, to our department, can remain confidential within that. That is something that you can choose what remains confidential versus what would be public to the other agencies. So, I mean, if we wanted to, we could just release the name and the date of birth and that would be it. We don't have to release any social security numbers, documents that we received, anything like that. The Helpline Network of Care, they have their own security system that they're using. Shawna, I don't know if you can dive further into that one as well?
Yeah, so it's, like Heather said, it's very much where it can be customized to that particular organization of the level of data sharing they would like to have. Again, we encourage enough sharing so that the partner agency who's receiving the referral can see enough client information that they can start ten steps ahead with that individual instead of having to start a full intake process again with that client. That's where, that's where the streamlining of communication is coming in with the network. A lot of the protections behind the scenes, like the privacy policy, is revolves around just protections at the agency level, so every, every end user has a background check if their agency already does it. We don't repeat that, but we do collect that information. Every end user signs off on the privacy policy. When we train, we go over client protections as far as the same type of thing that they do for healthcare. You know, you're not sharing your password, you know, protecting client privacy in those kinds of ways and that you're responsible for your password and who is using it in the system. There is an audit trail collected from the system as well, so we can know what is happening under each user license. And then we do have a cybersecurity policy as well from our end of things, protecting the network from a data breach. Were there other, and then there is, I don't know if Heather mentioned this already, but there is a client consent to release information into the shared system, so they are, you know, consenting to that information, releasing, releasing their information to the system.
I suppose this would also help with somebody maybe trying to take advantage of the system too?
Right, very much so, because right now, I'm just going on word of mouth that they have tried these other places. For all I know, they just don't feel like going to all these other businesses and they're just telling me that, short of me calling every single assistance place in Brookings County prior to assisting them.
How does the fee, I'm trying to find it on here, at the end of the year, and I saw the, the dollar amount, but how does that work then? Is that per person that, that's in the program?
Yes, so it would be per, per user. So I would be, when we have to start paying after August twenty twenty-four, I would be one user, so that would be thirty dollars. And then if Dan wanted a user login for himself, that would be thirty dollars. So it would be sixty dollars per month.
Heather, what's the frequency that this working group comes together to discuss some of the ways that they might all work together through that coordinated system?
Sure, so right now, I've, we've gone to one task force meeting. We have another one scheduled here in May that we're gonna meet up at. They sent out a poll, kind of asking the agencies in Brookings what they want out of this program. Right now, it seems like the program's pretty flexible into building to each agency's needs. So I had put in some questions in there and I'm sure other agencies did as well, and so then that's what we'll discuss at this upcoming meeting with Tara, who is representing us for Brookings.
Commissioner Pierce, would that be a meeting that you would have interest in attending to make sure that some of our legal and statutory obligations are addressed?
Depending on when it was.
Yeah, I can send you the email and then let you know.
Depending on when it is.
Sure.
You know, when I, when I look at the agreement itself, and I don't know that, are we actually looking at a motion today on the agreement?
No, I don't think so, no.
So just to say the standard stuff that you guys have all heard me say about other agreements, but first of all, we need to look at that agreement. I don't believe it, it has provisions in it that may be contrary to our records retention rules, so I don't think that it complies with that. In Article Eight, talks about Brookings and Watertown, which makes it sound like the agreement, how it's worded, is between the city of Brookings and the city of Watertown, instead of talking about the county. That needs to be clarified in how that's done. And I really would like Dan to take a look at Article Ten, provisions, which is definitely not acceptable how that's written. That, that would be a liability for the county. We need to pass this through our insurance company, just to make sure that we don't have any problems with them. And then I think the next question I had, who would be our point of contact? That's going to be Heather.
So I would be your point of contact, I guess, as far as our county, like our county program goes. Tara, and I can send you her information too. She is, who is hosting all of these task force meetings on behalf of the Network of Care.
But, but you would be our point of contact, right?
Yeah, yep.
And then that would require that, that we do a background check on you, which maybe we've already done that because of the job that you've got. But whoever has that position in the future, every time they're replaced, we have to have a background check if we're in compliance with this agreement. And I just don't know, Dan, about the whole four-point-eight provision regarding law enforcement and access to this information for law enforcement, whether that's acceptable or not. I don't know if Marty's looked at it, if you've looked at it. Those, those were all my concerns when I read the agreement. I just thought, this doesn't work really well for county government, but maybe we can fix the agreement. And, and again, it would be my druthers is what I'm gonna use, that if, if we join up with this system, that we never give into this system personally identifiable information, social security numbers, driver's license, those, those types of information are never shared. Other entities can get that directly from people because of the liability issue and the state law on if there's a breach and what our obligations are in the event of a breach.
Absolutely, yep.
Great. Anything else? So we'll look forward to hearing about when that next conversation is and in the meantime, we'll make sure that probably the Sheriff's Office and Dan's office and Leanne all get a chance to kind of make sure that that gets discussed as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our item D, our scheduled nine thirty, is discussion and possible action on any, or both funding for Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. We'll invite Mary Beth and board members for a presentation to start and full disclosure, our ID eight architecture has done some level of pro bono services for the agency, so I will present with Mary Beth and abstain from any voting on this item.
My name is Mary Beth Fishback. I'm the executive. And wellness. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all this morning, give you an update on some of the things that our agency has seen over the last couple of years and talk about what our next steps are and plans for future growth. So back about four years ago. So back about four years ago, our staff and board came together for a strategic planning process. And that process really set us on the trajectory that we're on today in terms of the service provision and growth for our agency. Out of that process really came a shift in our mindset of how we provide our services to Brookings County. As a community mental health center, we are charged with serving a core set of services. And that includes outpatient mental health and substance use services as well as 24/7 emergency services to the county. From that strategic planning process, as a group, we really came to the understanding that we are and want to be so much more than just that core set of services outlined as a community mental health center. We really want to focus on the community aspects of being a community mental health center, being a place and a space where people can come and feel safe and accepted, creating a culture and environment that promotes belonging and connection within our agency. And then really working hard to identify and respond to the needs of individuals within our community. So as we're seeing needs and wherever that need comes from, if it arises from the school, the police department, any type of law enforcement, we want to be able to respond to those needs that are being identified within the community. So all of this process kind of brought about, again, a shift in our mindset, but also a change to our name from Essential Behavioral Health to Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. And this was really intentional to incorporate that idea of whole person wellness in mental health and substance use care. And it also brought about the naming of our physical space to the IV Center. This kind of set the stage for our physical space to again be that place in our community for gathering, healing, and connection. So today I'm going to share with you what has transpired from that shift in mindset and where we are today and what we need to continue to grow and provide high quality services to Brookings County. So as you can see up on the screen, our mission is to provide comprehensive, integrated behavioral health services that promote personal well-being and quality of life for all. When we make decisions about the programs that we offer and the growth in services, we really take it back to our mission and are we serving our mission in the services that we provide to the community? The last couple of years with the pandemic has really highlighted the importance of mental health and substance use care and the importance of connection within our communities. Nationally, we have seen the need for mental health and substance use services grow exponentially. I pulled just a couple of high level stats to take a look at here. One in five Americans report that the pandemic had a significant negative impact on their mental health. And one in three young adults in the U.S. experience a mental illness in any given year. We've seen nationwide, 3.8 million young adults have serious thoughts of suicide. 18% of adults with mental illness also have a co-occurring substance use disorder. And right now, 10% of Americans with a mental illness are uninsured. And this has increased for the first time since the passage of the Affordable Care Act. So we're seeing people that need mental health and substance use services that don't have the ability to access due to insurance or ability to pay. And then among adults in South Dakota with symptoms of anxiety and depression, 32.4% report an inability to access services. Our U.S. average right now is 26.9%. And that access or inability to access can come from a lot of different reasons. One is availability of care. That's kind of a big driver right now. Across the state and across our country, having the providers that we need to be able to service individuals that are experiencing symptoms. So again, high level stats from nationwide. But it's also very much what we're seeing here in our own community and in Brookings County. We are continuing to see that exponential growth in client need. So on the next slide here, we're looking specifically at our local client counts. And this graph demonstrates our unduplicated client count growth from 2017 to 2021. And when I say unduplicated client count, this is single individuals coming in for service. My bottom stats are really the total number of appointments that we've had in a given year. A lot of the individuals, most in fact, come in and are seen multiple times, not just on a single point of service. So unduplicated clients is a single individual coming in for service, regardless of the number of times that they're seen in our office. So again, we've seen really exponential growth, particularly from '21 to '22. And our 2022 projections are based on the data, it says data up there, data from Q1, essentially the first four months of 2022. So we're projecting to hit over 2,700 individual unduplicated clients in 2022. And that's an increase of over 1,600 total clients from 2021 to 2022. And then again, total appointment counts for 2021, we had over 11,000 appointments in that year. And based on, again, our current trends from quarter one of 2022, we're going to hit over 12,000 appointments over the course of the year. So again, these numbers are pretty eye-opening when we look at a graph like this and really demonstrate the need for increase and growth in our services. It's also required us to get very creative in how we meet the existing need. So in terms of providing services to Brookings County with this dramatic of an increase already, being able to kind of pivot quickly, add additional staff, convert space that we wouldn't have otherwise used within our building to make sure that we've got office space for clinicians. So again, it has forced us to be very creative in how we address the ongoing client needs. This next slide is specifically related to crisis contacts. So this is our emergency services that we provide to Brookings County. 24/7, 365 emergency services to the county. And we're the only provider in Brookings that provides this crisis services. So looking at our total crisis contacts, as you go from left to right across the graph, we're looking at total hours in direct service. So again, anytime, day or night, that someone calls in our office, you get an actual person to talk to. We have a clinician on call 24/7. The hours that are demonstrated are direct service hours in crisis situations. The next bar is the total number of calls that have received, that we've received. And then the final bar in the set of three for each year is the number of individuals that are served. So a lot of times we will count a single call, for example, if dispatch calls in, but we could be dealing with an entire family or multiple individuals that are impacted by that crisis. So that's where the total number of individuals serves comes in. So far in 2022, so since January 1, 2022, we have already provided 154 hours of direct crisis service. We've had 267 calls since January 1 and served over 360 individuals in crisis, again, just since January 1, 2022. So based on those numbers, if we project that through the remainder of the year, we're looking at over 800 crisis calls and over 450 hours of direct crisis service. This is above and beyond what I just talked about in terms of our client contacts. So the client counts that I showed you in the previous screen was all scheduled services that are provided in office. This is above and beyond. So our clinicians that are maintaining a full caseload, providing the level of service that we are doing during the day, during regular office hours, are also providing this high level, really intensive crisis service to Brookings County. The conservative cost of providing crisis services annually is about $155,000. That counts kind of staff expense and some additional pay that we provide to staff when they go out on crisis calls. And then operating budget, year over year, I just wanted to give kind of a quick highlight on how we have trended in terms of our operating budget. So again, with the three bars, year over year, we're looking at total service fees, total revenue, and then total expenses. So as an agency, we're predominantly a fee-for-service-based organization. But we also do rely on public funding and grant opportunities to help offset some of the expense that we are not able to bill or receive funding for from other ways. So this graph, I think, really demonstrates over the course of the last four or five years, not only our increase in operating budget, but our focus on operational efficiencies and getting our service fees to really close the gap between our service fees and our total expenses. So we're not relying as heavily on public or additional supportive funding to offset our operational costs. And then just to drive down our FY '22 and give you a quick breakdown of where our revenue and expenses lie. So this is FY '22 specifically. We have 71% of our revenue is fee-for-service. So again, we are a fee-for-service agency. So where you see the acronyms kind of across the right-hand side, that's mental health state contract, chemical dependency state contract, Medicaid, Medicare, insurance and EAP, private pay, and then we do have some grants and other income. 14% of our revenue from 2022 was city, county, and United Way funding. And the vast majority of our revenue comes from fee-for-service. And then I did want to highlight out what we account for in uncollectible fees. So on an annual basis, we have roughly $120,000 in uncollectible fees. So this is services that we've provided that we are unable to recoup costs for, for whatever reason. Whether it's services provided to individuals that don't have insurance and they kind of fall between the gap of insurance and state contract coverage. But it's uncollectible fees. And then the $155,000 I mentioned in unbillable crisis services. So this is service provided that again, we are not able or do not bill for in any other capacity. So that's looking at a total of $275,000 in non-reimbursed services annually. And then highlighting our expenses, you'll see that the, again, vast majority of our expenses are in personnel costs. So 82% of our expenses are in personnel costs. And we have, over the last four years, we have really made the growth and development of our staff a priority for our agency. We are, we're people serving people. We need to have our staff to be able to provide services to the community and take care of our community residents. So we're people serving people. And in order to do that, we've got to be able to take care of ourselves and take care of our own. So we've really focused on increasing our salaries to get up to what is kind of 50% of market comparison at this point. For a long time, salaries were even below the 25th percentile. So being able to pay our clinicians that are doing the hard work a reasonable wage, focusing on supporting professional development and training for our clinicians. So again, we're having our high-quality, highly-trained individuals that are available to serve our community. So that focus has, again, really been put on staff and the majority of our expenses come in personnel costs. Looking at an increase from FY '22 to FY '23, again, to keep pace with what we need to hire and retain staff and get people up to that kind of 50th percentile market comparison, we're looking to add about an additional $160,000 simply in direct personnel costs. So that's base salary, doesn't include benefits or liability insurance. And then from FY '23 to '24, looking at needing to increase in over $270,000 in direct personnel costs to cover addition of new staff and annual increases in salary to keep pace. Our staff counts, again, just to kind of demonstrate what our growth has looked like over the past few years. This graph is showing a breakdown of admin, clinical, and then total staff starting in 2018. I represented it this way just to give an idea of the improvement in operational efficiency that we've seen, particularly over the last couple of years. We've been able to add several clinical staff, which are billing staff. That's how we generate our fee revenue is having clinical staff that can bill for their time. We've been able to add a number of clinical staff and maintain a small administrative team, which lowers our overhead costs. So that's really helping drive the shortening of the gap between our service fees and our total expenses when we're able to have more clinical staff, less overhead, and providing those services. So right now, as of today, we have 19.2 FTEs. In 2023, what we need, again, to service, what we're seeing in terms of need in the community is 24.6 FTEs. For FY '24, we would look to get to 29.1 FTEs. And then a five-year growth estimate is needing to be at roughly 35 FTEs to, again, service the need that we're seeing within the community. So our current building, located right behind the food pantry building, was built in 1976. It's roughly 6,000 square feet and currently houses our 19 staff. This building has served its purpose. It's been great for us. It was particularly great when we were around 15 to 16 staff members. We fit very comfortably in that building. Over the course of the last couple of years, again, well, really in the last year, in order to add staff and meet the needs that we're seeing in the community, we have converted every possible usable space within that building to office space. So storage closets, break rooms, conference rooms, everything has been converted to usable office space, simply to meet our growing need. And we've now kind of maxed out. I've got no place else to build within our existing structure. So to be able to continue to grow and provide the high-quality services that we want to be able to provide to Brookings County, our building, our physical space, needs to grow along with us. This is where I'm going to let Angie jump in and help us out here.
So what you see in front of you is the sort of two-phase, but three-section plan for proposed growth and expansion. And this entails Phase 1 addition to the north and an expansion to the west. So Phase 1 would be a two-story, so lower level and main grade plane addition. So that staff can move from the existing building into a Phase 1 addition on two levels. And then allow Phase 2 to be added and the renovation of the existing building to be done in the second portion of a single plan for renovation and addition, but happening in two phases so that the entire staff doesn't need to relocate and pay for relocation expenses while that's going on. We've had a couple of different conversations with local construction companies about the feasibility of that. And it seems to be the best-case scenario for avoiding disruption to the staff and the clientele that Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness serves. So that puts the final Level 1 area finished square footage, just over 14,000 square feet, almost 14 and 1/2. And when you think about the needs of the organization to grow over the next 10 years at a minimum to potentially 35 to 40 staff members, one of the things that's helpful to understand is that the combination of staff office area and staff support area, as well as group areas and utility spaces within the building, puts the square footage ratio per staff member around 400 square feet per person. And so when you think about the potential future growth to a staff of almost 40, you're looking at nearly 16,000 square feet of finished area needed to support the staff and the community that they support. So that just shy of 15,000 square feet on the main floor allows you to take care of all of your staff, staff needs and community group areas, as well as then putting some of those back-of-house functions, like a staff break room, some options for respite and training facilities for staff in that lower level. Certainly, some of those spaces, we would love to be able to accommodate on that first floor. But understanding that making those kinds of accommodations in the given footprint that we've got and within the financial means that we have is certainly one of the considerations. So that's generally, this is the lower level. So there's about another 5,200 square feet on that lower level. So staff training, storage for supplies and materials, some of those staff support areas, those kinds of things would be on that lower level, leaving the total building square footage around just about 20,000 square feet total. Not all of that would be finished square footage. Some of it would be mechanical storage, those types of things. But that puts the total potential cost of future building. But that puts the total potential cost of future building in the next year or so, somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.6 million, most likely. So that's the magnitude of what we're looking at. The project timeline, in 2022, the goal is to fund the design process and make sure that we're prepared to do that, work with staff to figure out what the final needs look like. The early part of 2023, we would like to see the bidding of that project take place. The last portion of 2023, working through the construction of Phase One, so that section to the north of the current facility, that happens on the lower and main floor level, that would allow us to relocate staff into that Phase One addition prior to the construction of Phase Two and the renovation of the existing, which puts them at fully operational capacity in spring of 2024.
So as, as Angie mentioned, with that scope of work, we're looking at an estimated project cost of about $3.6 million. So at this point, looking for county, city, and private fundraising to cost-share that with us. Hoping that the city will consider converting the north side of the Fourth Street, north side of Fourth Street to angled parking, which would be a continuation of what we have in downtown for downtown parking. And then the ability to maintain access to at least some of the public parking within the 72-hour lot as well.
So those asks are in consideration of the, the new addition puts the new entrance to the facility on the south side, so along Fourth Street. That Fourth Street entry point, as opposed to being on the alley, if that 72-hour lot ever got redeveloped, they would be in big trouble trying to have clients access through an alley. And so making sure that we can put that on a public-facing street is the goal. But we wanted to avoid the entrance to the facility being on the residential street on Second. And so the goal is to make sure that that public-facing south side is the closest proximate parking for clients.
And then finally, just a big thank you, not only for your time this morning and hearing my presentation, but for the support that you all have provided for the last several years. As long as I've been involved with this agency, I greatly appreciate the, the support and willingness to be a partner in providing mental health services to our community. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's open it up for discussion here and talk for motions or questions for anybody?
I guess I'll go first. Just, I appreciate the presentation. There are never enough resources for mental health. I've, I've talked to both you about that in the past, having served on the board for a couple of years when we were, made some big changes. And I appreciate Mary Beth's leadership. It's really brought to light how inefficient we probably were and how efficient we're going to have to be in the future. And it's just not an option to, to, to ignore it and not to look at it. So expansion of the facility or new facility, whatever way you guys want to go, we're not going to make that decision for you. You guys get to make that decision. So how we may participate in that, obviously, is financial. And as you're well aware, ARPA funds are, have to be expended by the end of 2024 and your layout, your plan, your construction timeline fits perfectly for us to, to expend those funds in accordance with how they're supposed to be allocated. One of the things we did as a policy at meetings we've had talking about our ARPA funds was the fact that we wanted to use the money for not ongoing expenses, for one-time expenses, which would be basically a building type of a structure's one-time expense, rather than saying we're going to pay for payroll. And in four years, we don't have that money anymore. And how do you, how do you finance your payroll from there on? So how we're going to look at our funding and my opinion of how we're going to look at it is for one-time expenses is what we've really decided we wanted to do. So your project is a large one for me. I think it's a project that we, we need to support. You got your estimate at 3.16?
3.6.
3.6 million. Obviously, we have 6.8. I think we're going to have other requests for part of that money, obviously, that we have to look at, at funding. I personally would, would be looking at a large percentage of that 3.6 coming from the county because we have those funds. I also know that the city has ARPA funds. So it could be donated to this project also on a one-time basis. Beyond that, then we start looking at the feasibility of the additional money you need to, to complete the project. So in that venue, not, not knowing that the county or the city is going to contribute, what are your plans for that public participation in matching funds? I would look at ours as a grant, not a matching fund proposition, because if you don't match, you don't get the money. And I prefer not to get into that position. Ours will be a grant of the money. What plans do you think you would look at for putting together that, either through your foundation, if it still exists, or a, a public request for the additional funding? And what do you look at that as right now?
Yep. So aside from city and county ARPA funds, the remainder, we would look to do a, a capital campaign for. We've had conversations with other local community foundations, community entities that would be interested in participating, as well as just doing a, a capital campaign for private donations.
I guess, I know it's a wish list. Give me a figure, roundabout figure that you would look at for, for county and maybe city participation with ARPA funds out of the 3.6.
Ideally, I would like to see 1.2 come from each county and city.
I mean, that's reasonable. I, I just want to put the number out there so that we have something to discuss.
I just like to say, you've, you've done a great job with facility and the programs. One thing I'm concerned, what's your, in the future, hiring staff? Do you, how's it all look for hiring staff in the future for the facility?
Like anywhere right now, it's difficult. I think we really benefit from having SDSU here and our ability to bring on interns and hire interns, keep and train them. I think that is a huge benefit to our agency compared to some of the other community mental health centers across the state. But certainly looking at, looking at our salaries, looking at our benefits packages to be able to attract staff to come in. It's a challenge. It's a challenge everywhere right now. But again, I, I think having access to SDSU and a flow of interns coming through the graduate mental health program is a benefit for us.
If somebody in the audience would like to take a comment too. And if anybody else would like to jump in, just raise your hand and I can call on you.
Hello again. And I just want to say I'm fully supportive of what I've heard here with money going into programs like this. Now, I sat and listened to her presentation, the overhead. I also sat and looked at all of you listening to the presentation. And we all know that behind these numbers that we heard, the increasing numbers for the needs for this type of help, the dollars. But these are people. These are people in our communities that are suffering, and I think we all feel it. These are people that need these very special services. And I'm more than happy to see our community provide that to those people. But it's going to take more than that staff and the added money that we're going to pump into that program and the better facilities, bigger facilities. It's going to take all of us to bring our community together and to help these people. This, this escalated during the pandemic. We all know that. We saw the numbers on the charts. They showed us that very clearly. Well, let's go back and take just a brief look at that pandemic. How did that start? And I mean, we can't talk about all that, but we know it started with fear. And we know that fear was peddled very well and sold to all of us. Now, I got kind of tired of the fear pretty quickly. I quit wearing the masks. I quit doing the distancing. I hugged people that wanted to be hugged. I talked to people that I wanted to talk to. I went places I went to. I went to hair places to get my hair cut and they would refuse me service. I said, fine, I'll walk out the door and find somebody that will cut my hair without wearing a mask. I'm just saying, we need to take a hard look at what's behind all of this. You know, we can keep throwing money all day into programs and make them bigger, bigger, bigger as more people need more help. And more people will need more help if we stay on the trajectory that we are right now, which we see in the charts. We're all connected. We need to address the real problems, which, you know, we need bigger facilities. We need more dollars. We need people trained. We need to fix the real problems, which is connecting, again, with our community. I've looked at the whole spectrum. My mother, 92, in a nurse, in an assisted living. And I did the window cry visits. That didn't go very well. I did daily phone calls, which I still do with her. And she'd cry on the phone every day we called during the pandemic because she was locked in her room. I saw schoolchildren suffering and getting prescriptions for anti-anxiety. I saw my own grandchildren going to their childcare with the teachers, wearing masks. Fortunately, they never pushed the children wearing masks. I mean, I've looked at the whole spectrum and I have, I have the advantage of having time to do that. I researched. I talked to people. I listened to people. And I feel a lot of things in my own heart. So I see a much, much bigger picture. And I just hope that we address things differently. I know there's a lot of federal dollars coming our way. And I saw that, I've seen the harm that those dollars are causing too. The dollars drove what happened on the SDSU campus. The dollars drove what happened in our public schools. The doctors, the dollars drove what happened in our businesses, closing down businesses, making us walk a certain direction in the aisles. The dollars are not the answer. We have to have the dollars to do things like new facilities. But that's not the answer. So I just reach out to you with my words, which just kind of spill out of me these days. I reach out to you more with my heart and knowing that we're all connected and we are going to be better. So let's, let's do things for the right reasons. Let's do things to improve things beyond just dollars and, and facilities. Thank you.
Anybody else? Comments? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I'm Carla Gatsky. I serve as Chair of the Board for Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness and have for a few years. And I want to say thank you for the support and the funding that you've provided us in the past and assure you that as a board, we are really sincere about being fiscally responsible to provide high-quality services, to provide those 24/7, to provide services for all people, and to be fiscally responsible so that our services are consistently matching the fees for services and that we rely on your support for those things that aren't billable and for the, the critical improvements in our facilities. So people really do feel welcome when they come and so we can recruit and retain the staff that we need to serve those people. So thank you for your support.
I want to thank you all for coming. I, I know that you know I'm supportive of East Center, excuse me, of the Ivy Center. And, and I've been involved with that facility since it was built. And I live one block from that facility. And I've, I've talked to many of you about the remodel project, which I support. And I'm going to support whatever the county decides to give toward that. So now that I've said all that, I just want to tell you as somebody that lives in the neighborhood, doing the angled parking on Fourth Street is going to cause you problems with the neighborhood. And I'm going to ask you to maybe think about not doing that because you will get pushback from the neighbors. That when, when the remodel project started being talked about and I think possibly there are going to be two houses removed for the, for the, the building, none of that is going to really affect the neighborhood if the parking remains how it is today. And I know you're having some issues with the city, but that's something maybe that needs to be worked through some more. If, if you built so that you did not impact parking, and we all know about parking wars in the city of Brookings, I don't believe, as a statement of my opinion, I can't speak for everybody, but I am pretty much in touch with the people in my neighborhood regarding planning and zoning issues. And I'm the person that they talk to on those issues. And I know we're going to have a problem with the angled parking. And, and I would ask you to maybe rethink that, that particular part of the remodel project. This facility can sit where it's at now, when it was built in 1976 and I was involved in it then. Okay, we had no negative problem with the neighborhood. And the way it's being designed and built, I don't think it'll have an impact on the neighborhood unless the parking issue ends up being a problem. And so I just really ask you to reconsider that. But I am entirely supportive of the commission contributing to this project. This is a great use of our ARPA funds.
Okay, well, we don't have a motion here. I think we probably need to discuss our total package of ARPA funds and where we want to go with them. And obviously, this has been a focus for us because we asked you to come and present. And so we appreciate what you brought. We suspected these numbers. We were hearing that these were the numbers. And we were hearing how many clients that you are, are working with now. And so now we got a chance to see them. Also gives us a number of, of your projected cost, which was what we were wondering. So I think you gave us some good information. I think we need to get together and figure out our ARPA fund package. And, and I'm pretty confident you're going to be in there. So any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Move on to regular business. Agenda item 8A, action to approve resolution number 22-15, FY 2022 contingency transfers. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any comments on this?
This would cover that $55,000 that the board approved at the last meeting for the Tractor for the Conservation District. Contingency transfers, you know, I, I know you're used to seeing them at year end, but because we know this is happening and the, the check is being cut, we're, wanted to get this done now so that we know kind of a moving forward where we're at.
Any other comments on this one? Jenna, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Boersma?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 8B, action to approve abatement number 22-36, an abatement application made by the city of Volga for parcel number 22047-11051-234-00 in the amount of $38.24. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Boersma?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to approve abatement number 22-37, an abatement application made by Ritter Family Trust for parcel number 11025-11252-061-30 for $494.03. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approve.
Second.
Beat each other up for it, guys. Any comments on this one? I think all the paperwork is in the, in the packet. Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Boersma?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item D, action to approve agreement 22-44, a master software license and services agreement between Brookings County and No Inc. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Any discussion on this one?
This is the agreement between Brookings County and No Inc. We will have No Inc. install and set up the electronic poll books. Our office had, was happy with the agreement. I did send the agreement off to IT support specialist Sean Plowman. He seemed to be fine with the agreement as well. And we did send it off to the state's attorney's office for review. I didn't hear back, but I would think, I think that he's okay with it.
Dan, did you have any comments on that one? Any further comments or questions by the commissioners? This is not an item that has public hearing associated with it.
Just, Jenna, would you tell us again how many other counties in South Dakota? I think you told us that when we did our research on this program.
Yep.
Where all this is being used in the state.
Yep.
Yep, so there are... Yep. So there are six, I believe there's either six to eight counties, I think six, um, that utilize electronic poll books in the state. And with that, we, the state has always worked with B Pro. Um, No Inc. has now bought and out B Pro, so we need to jump on board with No Inc., um, who the state uses as well. So does that answer your question?
It does, and, and this is the approved provider through the Secretary of State for the state of South Dakota.
Yes, it is.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners?
To the quote, um, I think that we had, had talked about, um, we would like to have the onsite support, at least to get us through the primary and general election. And then we can opt out to have that onsite support, which would cut the cost. I mean, we wouldn't have to pay for that, so.
And at the last meeting, we also had Sean talk about the fact that our IT folks have been paying close attention to this as well in terms of security, um, and that the combination of No Inc.'s support staff and our own IT support staff would both be participating jointly.
Yep, that is correct. We're going to be having a training here coming up here soon. We did just get the pole pads. Um, and so we'll be having training here coming up pretty soon. I did reach out to the other counties. Um, they're very satisfied with No Inc. They're very excited to be using these. And they said the, the ones that have used them with the past elections, they've all worked really well, and they didn't have any issues. So we're looking forward to using them.
Anything further? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Hi.
Krogman?
Hi.
Pierce?
Hi.
Bartley?
Hi.
Boersma?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item E, action to approve agreement number 22-45, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Brookings Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
So new overhead lines on County Road Nine.
Is your microphone on, Brian?
What's that?
Is your microphone on?
Yes.
Okay.
New overhead lines on County Road Nine, and this was thoroughly reviewed by the State's Attorney's Office and myself.
Commissioner Pierce?
I just had a question about the fact that that was overhead lines, which is not usually what we're seeing when we're seeing this. What, is, is there anything special going on with the overhead lines?
I can't answer that, but I know that there's a representative from Sioux Valley here that could possibly answer that question.
Come on forward.
Usually our occupancy is underground.
Right.
My name is Michelle Nielsen. I am the manager of engineering for Sioux Valley Energy. I believe I've talked with you guys a little bit in the past. We had discussion on a, a previous overhead line. So, uh, in answer to your question, we do have several, uh, lines that we bring for requests for the county for underground line. Those lines typically are going to be single-phase lines. They're typically going to be like we're burying an existing tap into a farmland place, something along those lines. When we bring forth our request for overhead, it's typically, typically going to be a three-phase line, and that is what this one is for. So we have a balanced approach. We look at every project and determine the, uh, whether it should be an overhead line or whether it should be an underground line. So there are several reasons why we would build an overhead line. And particularly for three-phase, some of those reasons relate to cost. Some of them relate to capacity. They, uh, typically, if it's a three-phase overhead line, it's going to be because it's tied to a substation, like a feeder tie, that sort of thing. The particular line we have here is, is a existing single-phase line that's overhead, and we want to change it to a three-phase overhead line. It's also tied to a project where we are actually relocating a line for another infrastructure project that's being done. So we have to re, uh, we have to remove a three-phase line that we have today in order to accommodate this other project. And we are replacing it with a three-phase line in a different location. It's actually a two-mile project. One mile is along County Road Right-of-Way, and one mile is along Township Road Right-of-Way. And so it's, it's basically rerouting an existing three-phase line into a new location. Does that help answer your question?
Do three-phase lines never go underground, or it's, it's just a budgetary decision?
I would say that we typically will put three-phase lines underground in subdivision areas and industrial parks, in areas where it's really not feasible to build an overhead line. There are, cost is one consideration. The line we're building there, if we build it overhead, it costs somewhere in the 110,000 per mile to build it overhead. If we were to put the equivalent underground line in, you're talking about a quarter million per mile. So there is definitely cost. Overhead lines typically last twice as long as underground lines when you look at replacement. The maintenance cost for an overhead line versus a underground line is about the same. We have locating costs for underground, for, we have tree trimming for overhead. Uh, we have about the same amount of public contacts, believe it or not, on, actually more on underground equipment than we do on overhead. So, uh, we have, uh, let's see. Uh, another issue we have is if we have too much underground line, we actually have something called voltage rise. We have increased losses on our lines. So there's a number of factors we use when we look at whether a line should be overhead or whether it should be underground. If you guys would like a, we probably could put together a, at least a half-hour, hour-long presentation, and we have presented this to the public before. Uh, we do get a lot of questions about this, so I wasn't really too surprised. People don't like overhead lines. They would rather everything be buried, but they're why we choose to build overhead lines instead of underground lines. And it is based on, you know, case by case, we look at these things. You know, it's not a, you know, it's not a, uh, what do I want to say? It's not a simple decision. Uh, we are very careful and, and we do realize, you know, there are issues. People, people want their power, but they don't want to see it, you know?
And the life expectancy on the overhead lines is what?
Life expectancy, so the lines we built today overhead, we expect them to last 50 to 80 years. The, the ones we have in the county today are, uh, many of them are at that 80 years, approaching 90 years. And a lot of the lines we have today that are that old are ones that we're replacing. Underground, you're typically looking 30 to 40 years before they need to be replaced. So, yeah, it, it's, it's a, there's a lot to think about, for sure.
Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item F, action to approve an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Brookings Dual Rural Water System in Sherman Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Brookings County Road 27.
That's Brookings County Road 27.
Correct.
Thank you. Any concerns or comments from the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item G, action to approve agreement number 22-47, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by East River Electric Power Cooperative, Inc. in Brookings Township. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
Uh, this is a, a part of the application that they're installing a lunar line also, and this covers their underground fiber optic that I guess they need to monitor their equipment.
Okay. Any questions or concerns by the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item H, action to approve agreement number 22-48, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by East River Electric Power Cooperative, Inc. in Brookings Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
This is located at, uh, County Road 46 and County Road 77, and there's going to be some new overhead up there. And, um, that's, this is located north of town at, uh, an intersection of two paved roads. So we did have quite the discussion on this as far as safety goes, and it looks, uh, according to their drawings, like, uh, that intersection will maintain an open view, so it had been reviewed.
Any questions by the commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item I, action to approve the following retail on-off sale malt beverage in South Dakota farm wine licenses effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. And do we take those each individually?
Uh, do you need to take them any? And I know there were some questions, Jenna.
Yeah, I was reviewing some property taxes, but everything's been paid, and so they're all, uh, in compliance. And our rec, our, our office recommends approval for all of the businesses. So it's up to you whether or not you want to take them individually for the record.
And, and all of those businesses pass their compliance check satisfactorily and those things as well?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so I think if, if everybody is okay with that, we can approve them as a single entity batch. So given that, we have Brookings Country Club, Inc., Cousins LLC, which is the boathouse, Good Roots Farm and Gardens, K&amp;K Enterprises, which is Corner Gas and Goodies, Skyview Junction LLC, and the Wagon Wheel Resort LLC. Is there a motion to approve tho, those licenses?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item J, action to approve a request to fill vacancy for three full-time correctional officers. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is three part-time, current part-time correctional officers moving to full-time. That's why you see three. And again, this is part of that request that came from that presentation a couple of meetings ago.
Great. Sheriff, any further comments on that one? Great. Any conversation, comments from the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item K, action to approve the Brookings County grants policy that is included in your packet. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Do I have a second? For the purposes of discussion at least? Okay. Um, any comments by the commissioners?
The, the one thing that I thought we were going to do with the grants policy is make it clear that before a department head applied for a grant, they should be talking to the commission. And it really doesn't say that, and I'm just curious if there was a reason we didn't go in that direction. It just says as soon as possible. I just think we should say before, uh, department head applies for a grant, they have to pass that by the commission.
That's the first bullet point. When a department or agency, outside agency attends to apply for a grant or receives a notification, the county commission will be briefed at the first possible commission meeting. I mean, I suppose you could say
Before our department head submits.
Before the, before it submitted. I mean, it's, receives notification of that, yeah. I mean, I, I, we could definitely put some stronger language in there.
Other comments?
Notify the commissioners, just to, they come forward and notify us, is our, do we make a decision if they should or shouldn't then, or?
Yes. The board would need to make a decision on whether you're even allowing them to submit a grant application because some of, some grants have matching funds. Some grants require, uh, maybe the, um, hiring of an individual beyond, you know, once that grant runs out, then you may be looking at additional personnel to fund in future years. I mean, there's a wide variety of things, but, I think the important thing to know is, is can you, can you afford the grant, to put it?
I, I think we're fairly well-covered here. The one sentence, at the first bullet point, the last sentence is the commission will consider approving acceptance of the grant award. Well, we're not actually approving acceptance of it because we haven't been awarded it. So maybe it should simply state that the commission will consider approving the application for the grant.
I think that particular sentence speaks to where the county, someone is just saying, here's money. And whether or not you say, okay, yes, we take that on because, you know, you want to know what you're, so that, that's a little bit different. That's, that last sentence is in cases where grant funding has been awarded with no application. So it's just somebody coming forward and saying, here, Brookings County, here's some money that we want to give you. And before you say yes or no, you want to review that, or that before a department says yes or no, the commission needs to review that to make sure that, again, you're comfortable with any possible, um, requirements that that grant then brings with it.
I think the sentences right before that talk a little bit about our ability to, um, discuss the, the application process. So basically, the department head is going to contact, um, the, uh, our finance office plus the commission department director and schedule the time on the next available commission agenda for discussion of the application. And then during the commission meeting, the board may authorize proceeding with grant application. So it seems like it says, I want to go for a grant, contact finance, contact Stacy or Stacy's office. Let's put it on the next agenda and go from there. I guess, does that allow that, um, it says may authorize? I mean, is there anything in there that needs to be a little bit stronger that says shall not authorize or shall not submit application prior to commission's approval? Leanne, is that kind of where you're coming from?
It is.
I think that's maybe a sentence that could be added to that. No grant application shall be submitted prior to commission approval, something like that.
And, and we can, we, we have two groups we're talking to, outside agencies and our employees, our department heads. Our department heads shouldn't be submitting grant applications that we haven't agreed to the conditions of the grant. We don't have any authority over those outside agencies, and when they come in and ask us to administer, we can say no, we don't want to do it. But, but for our department heads, once they've committed us, that kind of ties our hands.
What if we added behind, the commission will consider approving acceptance of the grant award or an application for a grant? That way we can accept or, or reject one that came to us without an application we didn't apply for or application for a grant. Commission will consider approving acceptance of the grant award or application for a grant.
That, that sentence, though, specifically states where no application is required. So it's, it contradicts itself within the structure of the sentence. So it would need to be in a prior sentence.
Wherever.
I don't disagree that, that we could make sure that that is stronger.
That give you some direction, Stacy?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yep. I think just, uh, an additional sentence or revision of a sentence, making sure that it's clear that, um, it comes here for board approval prior to submission, so, yeah.
Is the preference to wait to see those changes and table this until the next meeting for action?
If we're not going to change it right now, I'll move, make a motion to table it to our next meeting.
Second.
Any other discussion on the motion to table? All those in favor of tabling to the next commission meeting signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Table that for May 24th, 24th. Twenty-fourth? Item L, action to approve the sheriff's office applying for a highway safety grant.
See, he is following the intended policy.
That's so great. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Marty, would you?
She had me worried for a second.
Present that?
Because it's, there's a deadline here. Um, this, this highway safety grant is something that I've applied for every year in it. Time. So due to your policy, I'm coming forward. Of course, the cops grants and those I've always come before because that, after three years, we have to pick up this. This highway safety grant, I can't even tell you, I'd have to go back to how many years we've had this, but it's anywhere, um, 10-plus years. And, and this really offsets, um, the budget and taxpayers' money and so forth. Uh, what we applied for this year is 705 hours of overtime, 424 hours for wages for speed. In other words, um, when I have a troubled area such as through VOGA and so forth, I can put a deputy on overtime to run radar. Um, and then on the DUI overtime, this also allows us to put an officer at checkpoints with the highway patrol and then also do DUI enforcement. Um, also, this is how I, uh, move equipment out. Uh, this grant is going to cover three radars and, uh, three PBTs. And it's an 80-20% match. So, uh, this grant covers 80%. We have to come up with a 20% soft cost or matching cost for the equipment, which is a savings. Radars are about $3,000 and, uh, the PBTs are 325. And our, our match is $65 for the PBTs and $600 for the radar. I'd also paid last year for the two radar boards we're going to put up on Highway Two. He's a two that's on the south side of, uh, Ponsett, where we have a lot of speeding issues. So those will go up soon as highway department will do it.
Marty, are there any complex reporting requirements or any that?
Oh, yeah, it's all kinds. Sergeant Langstrad is in charge of this. He, he prepares the grant and, yeah, it's, we have to have a lot of documentation. Yeah.
Any questions, commissioners? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Marty. Action to advertise for a position on the Housing and Redevelopment Commission to fill an unexpired term through December 31st, 2024. Would there be a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, we've, uh, I'm on the Housing Redevelopment Commission, and we have, uh, five voting members. And we've been short one member for quite a long time. Um, and so we would like to get that filled so we can, better chance of getting our full board there.
Sounds good. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item N, action to declare items as surplus property to be sold via online auction. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do those items work? The washer and dryer, are we selling something online that?
Yeah, so these, so the items that are before you, it's a coin-operated washer, a coin-operated dryer, a 46-gallon water heater, 28 metal beds. I think 12 of them can be configured into bunk beds. The other 16 would be single beds. And then we also have a Comfort Air Window air conditioner. Um, I did reach out to Marty and Dave Bytler to see if these were in working condition, if we should sell them or if any of them need to be disposed. And Dave Bytler, at that time, responded with that he would like to try to sell all of them, which makes me think that they're all in working condition.
Yeah, the washing machine, that, in the bunk beds, the washing machine and the dryer upstairs and the work release, so they actually paid to wash their clothes up there.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item nine, commission department directors report. Stacy?
I did hand out the. Marie for April from Chad Nelson. I handed that out this morning, so you can all take a look at that. Um, I did update the work plan. That was included in your packets. Um, updates are just in, in red if you want to go through. Um, jail expansion, um, still, we're set, still set for mid-June for completion. Um, do we want to plan another open house? Or a ribbon cutting for that Phase Two? I guess maybe that's something the jail, the jail group could discuss, but, um, and I could maybe visit more with Marty about that, doing another open house for Phase Two. I don't know what part you can bring people through anymore.
I, I know there's been some, some asking, asking for that. So I, I don't, it's up to the commission. If, if, I'm for another open house if you want to. If you, I know I've been getting asked if they could come and look.
Any thoughts by the commissioners on preferences in that regard?
I can sure work with Marty and, and get something scheduled and maybe visit with Chamber if we want to do another ribbon cutting on Phase Two. That's something they'd be interested in, but we can, we can discuss that. I can bring more information back, but we're getting, hopefully getting down to the end now, so.
Those individuals have asked about the two safe rooms and.
Yep.
The 24/7 area and stuff, so.
Sure.
And, and our library and classroom.
I think that'd be great.
Yep. For the interchange, just work is underway. I think I've been sending out updates, um, on that. And then the groundbreaking is scheduled for the 11th at, I believe is that, at 10 o'clock. Um, out there, I'm, I'm assuming that's out at the site out there. Um, other updates, Midary Township just preparing for those landowner meetings. Um, Samara Avenue, we did have a meeting with Banner and kind of went over some preliminary design options.
Can I just point out that, um, both the banner item and the work session item should be April 13th and April 12th?
May 13th. Which, what was the other one?
Um, item nine H.
Oh.
Should be April instead of May.
Yep.
And then item 10D should be April 12th.
Oh, yeah. I was already a month ahead. And then the ARPA, we did have that, um, the discussion, uh, on April 12th. Um, I kind of went through and just made a list of things that were potent, were, were potential, um, projects, different things that we were talking about, um, during that discussion. So we kind of kept those, uh, in the forefront of our minds. Um, one thing too that I know has kind of been discussed, I don't think is on the list, is HVAC for this building. I know there's been some discussion on that at Joint Powers Board, so that's maybe something to add. And, yeah, so, and then under Personnel Union negotiations, those are scheduled here in the next, in a, in a couple of weeks, so. Um, then we did receive an email about the upcoming CDI golf outing that the county in, um, the past handful of years or so has gotten a team together for. This is just sort of a save the date at this point. Um, but Thursday, August 11th. Um, the next Joint Powers Board meeting is May 12th. Commissioner Pierce will be out of, um, the area on that date. So, um, wanting to get consensus, I think Commissioner Jensen is said he is able to attend in, in her place. If that is okay, I would like to get consensus for him to attend that and be the voting member on that Joint Powers Board for May 12th. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. May 12th. I'll, I'll include you on all of this stuff.
Overwhelming majority.
And then we did receive, um, this transportation alternatives funding available from SDDOT, um, a letter, um, about that. I think we've received those in the past as well. And other than that, just upcoming dates. Uh, we already talked about the groundbreaking coming up on May 11th. Um, several of you are heading to the NACO WEAR Conference here in a couple of weeks. Memorial Day on the 30th of May. Budget hearings, uh, June 14th, next door in the community room. Um, that will be pretty much all day that day, starting at 8:30. And then at 5 o'clock, we do have that joint session with the city council, um, on the housing study presentation. I think we'd kind of discussed that and got that worked out. So, um, that's all I have unless you, any of you have questions for me.
We'll move on to item 10, State's Attorney's Office report. Short, sweet, and to the point, per the usual, Dan. Commissioner reports on discussion items. We'll start with Commissioner Pierce.
On, um, the Chamber Annual Meeting with some of the rest of you, it was very interesting, well-attended. On April 20th, I attended the ICAP meeting to discuss budget stuff for the next year. And boy, is that complicated for ICAP. And, uh, I am going to be doing a training with Eric from ICAP at the end of May, which then I'm hoping I'm going to understand all that better. But we'll, we'll be moving forward with that. Tended the post-legislative luncheon on April 27th. And yesterday, I came over for the city recount on their election and watched the process, talked some with, with Jenna. Uh, it, it was just interesting. It's the first time I've sat through a recount. And Tom, from the company that we buy our tabulator from, was there. And we'd visited about our tabulator a little bit. I think we bought that in 2014. I think right when I came on the board, we bought that tabulator. And he said that the life expectancy on a tabulator is somewhere between 10 and 15 years. Ours worked great. Um, there weren't any problems with that, that, that I'm aware of anyway. And I think when we bought that, uh, what we've got now, it might have been $112,000, and we used our have-a monies for that.
I'd have to double-check on that to, to make sure.
I think we did use have-a funds for that.
And I think we have about $46,000 left in have-a funds.
That is correct.
So that's something eventually, we should have that on our, um, capital improvements list for probably in the next five years that we'll, that we maybe will have to be looking at that again. The tabulator that we use, the 850, is no longer made. And I, and we'll have to upgrade to a new type of, of, um, tabulator when that happens. And it was interesting to me, when I watched the recount, there were about 3,100 votes, ballots, I should say, that, um, were in the city election. And of course, we had nothing to do with the city election, right? But they had three people on the recount board, and they looked at every one of those 3,100 ballots. Some of those did not apply to the contested seat, um, because they were school board or whatever. But they did look at each one for the stamp, to make sure the stamp was on there. And Jenna tells me that it might be possible, and Tom talked a little bit about this, that when we, by the time we have our primary election, it might be that our 850 will, will, will count. If, well, how, how will that work?
Correct. The tabulator, it's now going to be programmed to reject blank ballots, um, unreadable ballots, and then ballots that do not have that stamp. So the tabulator is now going to be looking for, um, it doesn't look for like the color of the stamp or anything, but yeah, it, it, it's looking to make sure that it's got some sort of stamp within the boundaries of this box to make it official, so. And they will not be counted if they do not have that ballot stamp on there, so.
So who, who puts the stamps on?
The, the election board does. So the, the poll workers that we have at the polls, they do the stamping. Um, so it's training. It's, the, the training is key. That's, that's where it happens, and that happens in election school. So every school, municipality, federal elections, anytime you have an election, it's, um, you want to hold some sort of school or training for those people who are, uh, running the, the election. So it's something that we'll definitely be bringing up, yep, to let our board know.
And what was interesting to me is that where there were the un-stamped ballots came from one polling place. So we had one worker that maybe didn't understand or maybe got rushed to do that step. So, but we had a handle on that. We knew exactly what was going on, and we were able to identify that. And I, I do think it's important for people to understand that when a ballot goes out for early voting, whether it's absentee, uh, ballot that's mailed somewhere else, or whether it's a ballot that we're doing downstairs right now, those ballots don't get stamped. And they're not official ballots when they go out in the mail or when you do it downstairs. Our absentee board opens each one of those and looks at everything before that gets the official stamp on it on election day. Those are not open until election day. It was all very interesting. Then the only other thing I wanted to say is, as the liaison to the, um, the domestic shelter, Margot had her 25th anniversary. Margot Dempsey as the director of the shelter. And last Friday, the Brookings County Bar Association awarded her the Liberty Bell Award for her work that she's done with the domestic abuse shelter. That's all I have to say.
Any questions for Commissioner Pierce?
My, mine will be short, April 19th. Uh, oh, a new meeting banquet, and it was well-attended. Uh, the, uh, 21st jail meeting, uh, it's going well. I mean, everything's really moving along, and I think they're going to be on schedule. They're looking to, to complete the project on time. So bar any other delays, it should be on time here and when it comes up. Uh, then yesterday, spent a couple hours with the Safe Roads, uh, presentations, and we've already talked about that. And that completes my report.
Commissioner Jensen?
Event on the 19th, uh, 25th lately, on the 27th, uh, post-legislative luncheon. Uh, David Owen always has, uh, way with words and, uh, some good information that he always presents. On the 29th, I went over to Elkton to the fireman's feed. Uh, we had some good discussion on, uh, radios and repeaters in the Elkton area. Um, and also with, uh, the construction of the 20th Street overpass has started. And, uh, a few rumors out there, the road, uh, connecting Aurora to the overpass will be completed this summer. I continually hear that. Uh, I, I do think that, uh, as a commission, we should move forward with our feasibility study, um, to get a good, a good idea and a handle on a cost for that project. But that, I'd just like to get that, uh, moved forward. Uh, you know, that would address, uh, structures, the drainage, the road type, and, uh, give us a cost estimate, so. That's all I have.
Commissioner Pierce?
Would that have to be put on as an action item for a future agenda? Is that what, what you're asking, Commissioner Jensen?
Yes, I believe so.
We would need a draft RFP. And then as a commission, we would want to put it as an action item to approve that draft RFP and advertise the project for proposals. So I'm hearing Brian and I need to put together a draft RFP with Stacy.
That's it.
Commissioner Crowman?
Uh, at Brookings County Housing Redevelopment Authority meeting, um, got everything moving forward. Uh, there is a waiting list, uh, on, on, uh, people. We have vouchers available. The reason there's a waiting list isn't because of a voucher. It's because of, of the applicant, uh, getting all of their stuff and moving forward with it. Uh, but it has been going, uh, better, uh, on the efficiencies of getting those. And so, um, yeah, yeah, they've, uh, gave us an update on all those. Also gave us a financial report. We're meeting quarterly now on, on, on that, so. Um, and then had the 911 meeting. Um, and there was, uh, there is with Angie on that one, and, uh, request from the city, uh, for us to help fund with our ARPA funds a portion of the, uh, a portion of the call, dispatch, there we go, dispatch. They're talking of a new police station, which includes dispatch and also, and they're working their way that there. And they're asking us if we would help partake in that. So that'll be something we need to discuss. 25th, we had Brookings Health meeting. Things moving along there. You know, COVID subsided quite a bit there. Nobody currently in the hospital for it and our numbers have gone down dramatically. So that has helped out. And financially, the numbers look decent there. They're, they're above budget, so, so far, so good. And they had a nice first couple of months here. So they're kind of getting back to normal a little bit financially wise. Then had a Beta meeting on the 27th. And, yeah, they're just trying to keep things going as they go. We have an interim director there that seems to be doing a pretty good job and, and talking about increasing services, talking about increasing times that we are available. We've had some requests for some evening because we've kind of cut a lot of our evening availability. Like when you have downtown at sundown on Thursdays, maybe there's a route that we could run to get people that would have a harder time getting there. So the staff at Beta is going to put together a proposal, look at the costs. You know, being a service-based type of entity that not solely based on making money but providing a service. But then again, it, it has to take into some account what the costs are to providing a service that may not be getting used as much. So they're going to look into that and maybe do kind of a summer pilot of opening up a couple of days and see what the usage is and see if we can continue to expand the usage and get back to maybe some pre-COVID ridership members. So.
Commissioner Pierce?
With somebody that filled out the Section 8 housing application and also filled out the low-income housing application, which, you know, those are different programs, right? And the Section 8 housing program, still, when you fill out an application, is taking 45 to 60 days to get approval. And the Brookings low-income takes about five days. And when I looked at that, because I helped this person actually write the two applications, one of the things on the Section 8, somebody needs to take a look at that packet of materials that people who maybe are not the most literate people, okay, in our society are filling out. And they have to fill out, they repeat the same thing over and over and over again in a multitude of forms in this packet. It's like every time the federal government added another thing, nobody looked to see, do we take something out? They just kept adding more pages. And it'd be really nice if that application was reviewed to see if it couldn't be expedited. So people have a hard time coming up with all of that stuff.
I can bring that up.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? My week sounds a lot like 17th, the chamber annual meeting. I participated with several of you. The 20th was the BEDC board meeting for April. And we talked specifically about the strategic plan and how that's translating into their work plan for the next year in terms of what the, what the coming three-year range looks like and what level of staffing is necessary to achieve that work plan. So they'll be, we took the conversation, they'll be kind of collating all that information and coming back with a staffing proposal related to that work plan. The highest area of emphasis is actually the development of existing businesses in the Brookings community. So some level of investment in attracting and retaining businesses, but also helping those small businesses or mid-sized businesses continue to grow their operations. So spending a fair amount of time investing in existing businesses. The 21st was at the E911 board and one of the conversations was related to the data and metrics that they're providing for us from dispatch. Both the city and the county have requested information related to mental health calls. And so they're working to gather that information for us prior to final ARPA decisions as well. And then the 27th also participated with several of you on the post legislative luncheon. The color commentary is always on point. With that, I believe we have session in accordance with South Dakota Codified Law, Section 1-25-2, parentheses, 1, 4, and 6, for personnel, contract negotiations, and security measures. Is there a motion to approve or a motion to enter into executive session? Excuse me?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll take a quick five-minute recess before we meet in executive session.